I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councillor Boggs. Councillor Dagel. Councillor Whitaker. Councillor Smalley. Councillor Grousman.
I am here.
Councillor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner. All present.
To start off the meeting, I have an announcement to make. The agenda item under City Manager Report, the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association Award, will be postponed to a future meeting. The executive sessions on the agenda will also be postponed for future meetings. Attendees joining tonight's meeting via Zoom will automatically be muted upon entry and must identify themselves. Attendees will not be allowed to unmute themselves, therefore, if wishing to speak, the Zoom attendee must raise their hand to be unmuted. To use the raised hand feature, go to the reactions icon at the bottom of the screen and click on Raise Hand. Once finished, please click on Un Raise Hand. Introduction of media. Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before the City Council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign-in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting.
That was timely.
Presentation, proclamation. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Generally, when there's a proclamation made, the mayor will read that. In this particular case, since it was crafted by the Lions Club themselves, and we wanted to give them something special just for us, asking Rick to read the proclamation out loud, and then whoever is to receive the special acknowledgement, come up front with you so it can be seen on the Zoom camera.
So we can have them come to the center of the meeting.
Good evening, Rick DeYoung. The Sutherland City Council has proclaimed the month of November 2002, one, as Sutherland Lions Club Month. Proclamation stating that says for the past seventy-five years, the residents of the city of Sutherland have benefited from the service organization known as the Sutherland Lions Club. The men and women of that club have been tireless promoters of our city, donated thousands of dollars to our families, and a play to keep in making Sutherland the wonderful place to live that it is. Dennis Denny is our current president, and he will receive the award. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. So Dennis, if you could come up in front with the mayor. The mayor has a special plaque recognizing you and the proclamation itself that she wants to give to you. And we just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for everything that you do, from the flags to the Lions Eye-Sight Foundation and the service that you do for kids in the community. We thank you so very, very much. So this is our way of at least trying to give you acknowledgement personally from us, the mayor and the city council.
One more.
The Sutherland Lions and Lions International. Thank you very much for this proclamation. A lot of people don't see the work that we do. But all of our donations, we as members don't benefit from. It all goes out to your community and ours. And with your support, it makes it more possible and easier to do. Thank you very much, and you folks all have a good evening.
It says Christie's iPhone. Okay.
Thank you all.
I'd like to change a little bit on this and start and start with the City Manager Report.
Yes, ma'am. I hope you can hear me. I want to come out here so that people on the screen on Zoom can see me so that we can all get on the same page together. Welcome, all of you. It's nice to see that Pastor Andre is there. He's been working with us and helping us along. I want to start off by saying that I apologize for how rapidly this evolved. We didn't expect it to become the visual spectacle that it did this early. Let me also say that we began a process of trying to tactically deal with the homeless issue. All it takes is a look on any TV station or going around to any community, even into Roseburg, and see lions and the masses of humanity that are in need. And when it first started, we assembled the team, myself, the City Attorney, Aaron, Public Works Director, both the Fire and Police Chief. If you remember, when we drove around looking for alternative sites. So homelessness that I have come to learn over now two years of studying, I get on the internet every day and research cities across the state of Oregon, what they're doing and what works and what doesn't work. And I will tell you, in talking with Commissioner Boyce just last week, he says, well, I'll tell you what doesn't work, and he says, doing nothing. And doing nothing creates a foothold for things to expand so rapidly. The next thing you know, you feel like you're out of control. So we, soon as the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruled that we could no longer force homeless campers off of city property right of way without having an alternative to put them on, we began the search of inventory of all the city properties. We spent several miles driving around looking at, in fact, Chief Lane sitting back here. The first site we came up with was a piece of property right next to the fire station, if you remember. And that turned out to really not be feasible, safe in any regard. And so we wanted to have in our hip pocket a site that we could arm the police department with so that when there was a camper sleeping either on private property in which the property owner wanted them gone or in city right of way, whether it be the street sidewalk, back down in the park area, next to the freeway on ODOT land, that we had the authority to displace them because we had an alternative site. We kind of kept that low-key up until a point where multiple campers began setting up shop right on Central Avenue, right in downtown. We knew we needed to move more quickly than we thought we would. So we then came up with the one site on Sixth and State Street, which is a triangular piece, which has been the site all along. But now that we were going to be more forcefully pushing to get displaced people, homeless people, off of private and public land, we need to do a little more formal work on that site. So I don't know if you've known in the last week or so, but we've had fires set, sabotage, and other injurious action on private property throughout the community because they didn't want to come out on the site. So the chief and myself have gotten together and came to an agreement that the police department's going to be more proactive in doing that. So my intent was to take you all into executive session and tell you, this is where we're going, and have the City Attorney give you counsel on what our legal rights are and aren't. But because this rose to the fore when I heard about a number of people coming and some of you folks there, I decided to just take a moment. I know it's a little verbose, but I think it's important to be stated in the public record. So first of all, I want to emphasize that this homelessness thing, while it isn't our doing, we're stuck with it in a way, and it's not going away anytime soon. So what I've done is brought staff together, and we're working on a three-layer approach. The first is the immediate action approach. This is what we're doing. We're taking this property over here, and I'll have Public Works Director talk about the security fencing and the slats where people can't look in when it's only done, and the rock, and the trash receptacle, and the porta potty that will be put on site for them to go. We put together a little short-term team. Pastor Andre from the Seventh-day Adventist Church, you'll see him up there, Andre Scalafini. He's going to provide the human service contact to ensure that the people who are there essentially can get connected to services and probably move towards those services or get help to the point that they're not going to be there anymore. The chief and his team are working at staying within the legal confines of what they can and can't do when they cite a homeless person. And I want to just segue into one other little issue. It's not a little issue in our community, but it's a major issue in other communities. Have you seen this long stream of campers and abandoned RVs? Well, the chief and I, and particularly the chief, brought a code revision for you all to approve just this last August. That gives us the teeth to not allow those to be parked on any public street for more than twenty-four hours. And after that, we can have them towed. One of the debilitating issues with getting those vehicles towed is the environmental discharge required to clean up that disposal fee. And so one of the hindrances for us, and the chief's great, I can't tell you how much he's put up with my ADHD. But essentially, in this particular case, these wouldn't take the vehicles if they were left abandoned on our streets because they didn't want to pay the county disposal fee for the environmental. So with the chief's help, we negotiated an agreement with the Davis County Commission that any vehicle that was towed on our request from the public right of way, that we would pay that disposal fee. And now the towing companies will come toll. And if you notice, they're on our streets anymore. And he's been very good about going out there and citing them and finding them and getting them to move on. So I feel pretty good about that piece. The one that is still in limbo is the site that we've identified since we're required by law to have one. And so we've worked on that, and then I'm going to turn that over to Aaron. But in the longer-term objective we're doing is we're working with the county. And I've assigned Pat Lynch to be the liaison with the county at developing a county-wide response system that the cities, the county, the state, and the federal government would participate in. Commissioner Boyce is liaising, liai- whatever, he's working with us. And the intent is, since we are going to be having to deal with this long-term, doing the Band-Aid on Sixth, while it's required, is hoped that it's not permanent. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron and let him describe the work project that he's taking on over there. And I wish Pastor Andre could speak, but I'm not going to open up that because he's a pastor, and I'm a pastor, so it's getting me a bar de her and how long I'll talk.
Mayor, City Council, citizens. So I'll just reiterate what Jerry said. We're in the process currently of building the road. It's going to be an L-shaped road. It's going to go in on Fifth Street across Sixth from Fifth, where there isn't one currently. Then it's going to turn north, and it's going to go all the way through that triangular shaped piece that is the homeless camp. And it'll come out closer to where Sixth Street is. And that road will, it'll be approximately twelve feet wide, and it will enable us to get, for the police and fire EMS, whoever needs to get in and out of that property, they'll be able to go in one end without backing out. They can go all the way through. It'll also provide a way for the garbage truck to get in and out as we are going to provide a dumpster for these folks in hopes that they keep things somewhat cleaned up. And also, it'll provide access for the porta potty trap. There will be a bathroom onsite. So that's the first step. The second step, Jerry alluded to, is a fence. We're going to have a, on the State Street side, there's going to be eight-foot-tall chain link fence with privacy slats. The brush of the trees that are there are going to provide some what of a visual barrier, but we did have to remove some of the blackberries so that we can build that fence through there. So it isn't quite as much of a visual barrier as it was a couple of weeks ago. But some of that will grow back, and hopefully the fence will provide that privacy that maybe from the rest of the community that we hope to. Around the rest of the perimeter, there'll be a six-foot fence on the south side and on the west side where it parallels the railroad tracks. So there'll be a six-foot fence there. On the north end, it won't be enclosed. That's where the homeless will enter and leave. That'll be their access point. And on the south end, we will have gates.
And we will have a camera.
So that's what we're in the process of working on right now. And it'll be sometime, the fence, we're just getting the bids on the fence. So we're a couple of months out. So we're going to have this roadway infrastructure, not see a fence for a little while because it's just part of the process. We're doing the roadway ourselves, so we can make progress on that. But the rest of it will be as we can. But you should see the dumpster and the porta potty and the road completed before too long. I would say in the next month.
So if you could unlock Chad, our legal counsel, and let him kind of help everybody get on the same page legally so that you all understand the dynamic that we are faced with.
Good evening, Mayor, Councillors. Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So the main point Jerry already explained is that a couple of years ago, the Ninth Circuit, and a kick side of the city of Boise, Idaho, ruled that you cannot enforce no camping ordinances if there is no alternative place for individuals to sit, lie, or sleep. The basic ruling was that it violates the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel cruel and unusual punishment to punish individuals for engaging in basic human functions that they can't avoid. And so because of that, cities throughout the entire Ninth Circuit, which is pretty much the entire West Coast, are dealing with how to handle homeless populations within their jurisdictions. Some are not doing a great job. You see homeless camps everywhere. Others are doing sort of what the city of Sutherland's doing and finding designated spaces for individuals to go to keep the process or the situation more contained. The Ninth Circuit decision was appealed to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court did not grant review, which means that that is the law in the Ninth Circuit right now. There's a lot of criticism about this particular case, and most legal scholars expect that it will eventually make its way up to the Supreme Court once other circuits have an opportunity to address this issue. And if a split occurs, then the Supreme Court will address the issue. A lot of individuals think that the Supreme Court will eventually overturn the decision. But during this last legislative session, the legislature passed a bill, House Bill 3115, which basically codified this decision into state law. And what House Bill 3115 says is that any ordinance that regulates sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry on public places for individuals who are experiencing homelessness must be objectively reasonable. And so what that means is that if we have a flat-out prohibition saying that you can't engage in these activities anywhere within the city, then that won't be objectively reasonable because where else are individuals who are experiencing homelessness supposed to engage in these activities? So even if this Ninth Circuit decision eventually gets overturned by the Supreme Court in Oregon, we're still, because of House Bill 3115, going to have to deal with this issue. I think the hope and desire of most people is that the legislature now comes up with a secondary plan to provide some additional funding, working with Department of Health and others to provide better services so the cities and counties aren't the ones on the front lines dealing with these issues. You all have worked with the state enough to know that that is not necessarily something that we can count on. So it's our advice to all of our clients that they need to be working on issues like you're working on tonight to make sure that you're in compliance with both the Boise decision as well as House Bill 3115. So that's sort of the background in a nutshell. I'm happy to provide more details about any of these issues or answer any questions that you may have, but I don't want to go into too much detail, given that you've got a pretty big agenda tonight.
I know one concern of several was, where is this money coming from that we're providing this with?
Out of Tammy's checkbook. Well, it's going to come from probably multiple sources, but the principal source, we're looking at about $50,000 investment. And it's going to come from ARPA money or money from COVID that we received. And that's pretty much that. So yeah, but it is going to cost some money, unfortunately. And we've been blessed to have about a million dollars given to us from that. From that, and just a small, little editorial, you'll see where cities like Portland and Jean are spending almost 100% of all that money for homelessness. And I feel like that money was sent to us to have a broader purpose, and we'll be making presentations to council about some new parks and street improvements and other things to use that money for instead of spending it all on homelessness. So that's just my opinion. You are my boss. I work for you. When this subject does come before you, you can direct me otherwise. I would like Chief Mills to talk about the police department's interaction at this point. And one of the key things that people need to understand is that at the end of the day, they even are limited on what they can and can't do.
Yeah, so most of what I would say would just reiterate what Jerry said, what Chad said. We're bound by law. I know sometimes when we're called to some of these homeless complaints or unhoused individual complaints, that sometimes the public gets upset with the services that we give them because the service we give them is essentially none, besides going up, talking to them. What I wanted to let everybody know is that what they call void and that we currently have will fairly able to keep up as it is. Our officers would love to go out and interact with the public and get to know everybody on a personal level, if we had time for that, was essentially what we do. So when we get these different kinds of calls, you know, we're still averaging about twenty-six calls a day. All those calls are put on a priority list. Number one being high, number five being the lowest. As these calls come in, dispatch will take these calls and assign one of these numbers. That's how those come up on our street. We're dispatched number one, spurs two, and so on and so forth. These homeless calls, other calls are usually a four or five. If other calls come in during the process, and now we have another one, and we have two more before that last caller, another one comes in, we have another one. So it could take some time to get to those calls. Not because we don't want to, it's because we don't have enough of us to get around to do all the calls that fast. But we will get there. We do understand that it's a hot button right now. We'll get out there and do the best we can. As far as trespassing and things like that, you know, we'll get out together. You know, we understand the complaints. But we also have to use kick gloves on this because, like I said, we are bound. It's sometimes easier to ask people to move along than just to tell them if it's a good parking or force people to move people, which we essentially can't do. So, but I invite anybody who has questions to come in the office. I'll be happy to talk to anybody. There's a lot of information on this, a lot of house, a lot of lawsuits and everything that are kind of rolling for maybe kind of business damage. So I could talk for hours on this, but we have better things to do every hour. So, but I invite you, if you guys have solutions to these problems, don't talk to me. I'm open. I'm just trying to figure out how to make everybody happy, and so. So, let's see, have questions. Come in the office.
I have one question. It starts out with one question. I've had individuals contact me with the houseless, homeless individuals that go into the camp at Sixth and State. And is there any monitoring of them once they're in that camp? Can they come and go and will? Do we know who they are? I guess that's two questions. And if there is like a sex offender or something, do the city know who these individuals are if they're at the camp?
So there's also laws that prevent us from just randomly going up and asking people for identification and running the button of the sex offenders. So if we don't have a legal reason to contact somebody, we're not going to contact them just because they're on city property. Because that means if I have to go to Central Park and identify three or four people that were there just because they're there. And just because they're homeless individuals or whatnot, I'm not going to go over there and ID them just to see if they're a sex offender. That's not what our job is, if I'm not a victim, sir. So unless I get a call for something that's criminal, then I'm going to go to the SWAT and I'll identify people. If not, they're going to do that for all. As far as surveillance or security for that area, like Jerry already said, we're going to have security cameras there. We might not put them there in order to ever get a body away. So that's kind of the plan.
Well, what I want to also explain, Councillor Grousman, is that we do have a group of volunteers that have agreed to go onsite and help. Pastor Andre Scalafini from the Seventh-day Adventist Church is just great to work with. In fact, I'm not moving quickly enough, which is really unusual. Usually the other way around, having to slow down. Usually the other way around, having to slow down, but he's been great. He was out there today visiting with them. And he's got them to agree to a cleanup plan. When we bring a porta potty, he's bringing them pads and some of the essential things they need to stay out of the wet rain. And overseeing that and connecting them with resources. So we do have a volunteer corps. Through him and others, we're recruiting others. I call them the LSD, the livability services team. And this is a community thing. And for people to look at local government who has its six primary responsibilities, homelessness isn't one of them. And so we need the community to help come alongside and help us. And we've actually had more than enough people, but I, they want to bring a gun with them and I won't let them. So they're off the team, but it, it's gonna happen, but it's not gonna be formalized. Government process is gonna be through volunteers.
So if, if we have individuals contacting us, can we refer them to you?
Well, right now, I would suggest you refer them to me.
Okay.
And our, I just, like I said, I'm kind of shifting past responsibilities over because there's now a county-wide task force. And he's gonna represent the city of Southern on that task force. At working towards a broader, longer-term solution. And we'll probably use him in that capacity. His new job title is Livability Services Director. How's that?
There was some ladies that wanted to volunteer, so if they're on Zoom tonight. Take that pastor's name down. Does he have a phone number to be, can we give out his phone number?
Seventh-day Adventist Church.
Okay. Anyway, I know one of them has already bought some micros to go there. So there, you know, there were four or five of them that were very willing to help, so that's great. Anyone else?
First of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. The time limit of three minutes per citizen applied. All citizens must come up to the microphone. I have one here, and then we'll move to anyone else on Zoom. Melon, Fidel?
Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am a little disturbed by this proposition. I understand that you're trapped by the law. But as I look around and I see cities that have allowed homeless camps to exist. They've been overcrowded. They've been filled and then you still have over, look at Portland. Look at Eugene. Look at San Francisco. Look at any place. And we have legalized drugs in this state to the point that eighty percent, at least I'm told, and the chief of police can either verify or dismiss this. Eighty percent of the people that are homeless are on drugs. Okay, now if that's the case. What's going to happen to the crime statistics in Sutherland over the long run? It can't help but go up. I see that you're taking a short-term approach to this problem. And it may work for six months until the word gets out, what a comfortable place that you've set up for the homeless to go to. And then we're going to get more and more and more, and they're gonna be laying in the park. They're gonna be laying all over the place. We don't know who they are, which the police chief just said. They can be any kind of criminal, not just rapists, not just sex offenders, not just pedophiles, burglars, murderers. Is that what we want in our community? I feel very strongly that by going down this road, it will lead inevitably to heartache and a tragedy. The police department now doesn't have the, the people to go out on calls. What's going to happen if you add a thousand homeless people, eighty percent of whom are on drugs? And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Sure.
You have a solution.
Well, the solution I have is illegal. Okay, yeah, yeah. What I would do, and I don't think that this is wrong. I think anyone that's caught committing a crime that's homeless should be, should be kicked out of the community. That at minimum, okay? These, these people that, that have recidivism problems, and there are many, many, especially if you look at the surrounding cities. They're sent out on the street. They're gonna slap on the hand and they just go and do it again. So my point is, is that any crime that is detected by the police should immediately end the homeless should know this. Because any trouble, you're out of the city. Now, we can't solve the homeless problem in the United States or even in Oregon. But by darn, we can get control of here in Sutherland even with the law by enforcing existing criminal laws. And if we do that, people are gonna either behave, or they're gonna be gone, or they're gonna be in jail. I hope we have a county attorney that has the will to prosecute offenders unlike Portland. Attorney. So, so that, that's my concern. Okay, and that's what I would do, is get rid of the bad apples immediately. As soon as they do anything wrong, they're gone. They can shoot up in this city, no problem, because of our beautiful legislature. But the second they steal, the second they rape, the second they do anything wrong, out. And that's my solution.
I've dug into this a little bit and maybe verify this also if we wanted to. There are two different types of individuals that we're trying to address. What is the homeless that have mental problems? There's also the houseless, that they are law-abiding individuals that don't have a place for a number of reasons that end up on the streets. And they don't commit the crimes. So there's two different groups of individuals. The pastor can even identify that. What we need, and what it sounds like we need, and maybe you'd be willing to help out, is we need volunteers. So, to just go by and help them, to go by and visually see what they're doing. There's a lot of volunteer purposes that we have in this city. And I managed different groups like that and the community service. People would come by and honk their horn and give the high five. But none of them came and volunteered. So you're, you're gonna have to volunteer? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I also have comments.
Oh, okay.
I think you threw up a straw man. Because I said, you know, I'd invite them all in. If these are just houseless people. Okay, they wouldn't come under scrutiny with what I said.
Right.
But anyone that is acting as a criminal in any form is gone. Is either gone to jail or is kicked out of the city. I don't care which, just get them out of, out of my town.
Yes. And that's something where Chief Mills and his patrol and his officers can help out.
Yes, if they're a one or a two.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are four or five, and it's like the broken window policy in New York. If you don't get the fours and the fives, they're gonna turn you to ones and twos. If a guy can get rid, get, get away with trespassing and with doing minor vandalism, he becomes a four or five. And he gets away with it, the next time he's gonna be a one or a two because he's got no incentive not to. So unless we can up, up, up our police presence. Okay, spend some of the money we're talking about on parks on giving it to Chief Mills for more officers. So he can deal with the fours and the fives before they come, become ones and twos. Because right now he's stretched. He's stretched and we haven't even started to deal with this problem.
That's true, and the more volunteers and citizens of Sutherland that we have.
I'm a volunteer. There's nothing I can do if someone's a criminal.
Are there any more on Zoom that wants to ask?
I am not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Participants on Zoom that would like to speak?
We have a raised hand. Alicia, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm mostly concerned because I live directly across the street. And I am a single mom of three daughters. And two of them still live at home and they're both under eighteen. And I typically go to work eleven hours a day, so there are times in the morning and times at night that they're home alone. And even with an eight-foot fence from my front porch, we're gonna see in there. So what? I just moved to Sutherland in January and now I'm kind of regretting it. Because this, yeah, this terrifies me.
Do, does any of the trees and shrubs fall down?
No, well, they were and you guys started cutting them down. And it was, it was already scary with just a couple tents over there, but now like that other guy said, you guys are willing to move in hundreds of people.
No, it's not meant for permanent.
Well. But what protection, I have an eleven-year-old and sixteen-year-old. What are they supposed to do?
If they're scared and something's happening, just call nine-one-one.
But like that guy said, if it's not a one or a two, what's gonna happen? They're gonna stay here forever waiting? I work in Wilbur. I can't get home right away. And I won't lie, I have firearms in my house.
I mean, you're creating an issue that doesn't exist right now.
So how would you feel if you moved a minute across the street from your house?
My wife will hear that.
Well, yeah, if I could sit at home, sure.
Well, all I can say is that there's an eight-foot fence. If you have any issues, even think there's an issue. You call nine-one-one and our police officers will be there. So you don't need to worry about that. The, we got a great police force. They'll be there. And especially tell them it's related around this camp. We'll be there.
Intervention to the cameras that we have will be a deterrent.
Right.
On the, with the pastor getting involved with them. It could work out okay.
We have another person named Angela that would like to speak. Angela? Can you?
Hello.
Hello.
Yes, my husband and my family are very concerned about this too. We live right across the street as well and we have to see everything going on. We've seen a lot of nakedness over there. We've seen them urinate over there. I have grandbabies that are coming to live with me. They're going to have to see this out my window and out my deck. I don't want to see this in my community. It's ridiculous and there has to be a better plan, and you can't just dismiss us this way. You need to address what we're asking you. The lady down from me has very good concerns because there's no way you'll get there in time for her babies if something happens. Nor would you get here for mine. We are all very concerned about this and you need to take it very seriously. And what we have to say in this community matters. For the whole of the community, not just what's best for you and the homeless. And if you want them on your porch, put them on your porch. But don't put them on ours and expect us to deal with it. That's not fair. As she said a minute ago on the call, we just moved here too, five months ago, and now we're regretting it. How sad is that?
I promise you that we will be responsive with your call if there is an issue. The limitations we have with this site, which is the only one possible to meet the litmus test of the federal government. We're doing everything we can and we'd be more than happy to listen to any other ideas you might have. We'll have a camera there. We'll be watching over them. We'll have volunteers checking on them every day.
I do think that there's got to be a solution to this and soon because we will have an outbreak and it will be bad over there. The drugs, the alcohol, everything else that's going on over there, the nudity in front of our children is wrong. It can't keep going this way. There's too many of us in this community that have said, no way, this is not gonna happen. And you did not come to us. We didn't get no letter. We didn't get any kind of, you know, information that this was just a done deal now. Basically, our word doesn't make no difference. We're disgusted. We're very disgusted, very angry. Because we should have a face though in our community and our, and what happens with our children and our families as well. So. When we have a solution, we'd love to hear it. Anybody else have a solution?
Volunteer.
Do you have a solution?
There have been several times that many of us have asked them if they need help or wanted to offer them a job and they refused. Because guess what? They don't want our help. That's not why they're there. They're there because we're making it comfy for them to stay there. And that is a fact. You need to give them other resources. There needs to be a shelter in place. There needs to be something beside this. Because this is not fair to the community. This is not our problem. This is everybody's problem and everybody needs to deal with it. And when I say everybody, I don't just mean a couple of you, making the decision for everybody in the community. I'm done. I am so done.
Thank you. Is there another one who that said?
Yes, we have. A Lynn, her name is Lynn, or his name? Yeah.
Initially, I was just basically agreeing. I hear that you've been planning this for two years. But yet, we heard of absolutely nothing for two years. Why, why that? There could have been many ideas thrown your way in two years.
I accept responsibility for that. As I indicated earlier, this came upon us so quickly. We were prepared to engage a number of folks to find out what are their alternatives. This is not meant to be permanent. We are happy to sit down and work with you and with other members of the community, find alternatives and help make it work. But right now, at this moment, because of the dramatic way some of these folks began deciding to camp on people's private property and in their back porches and on Central Avenue. We had to move more quickly than we anticipated. So we had to get something in place in the interim. And that's what this is. This is just an interim thing until we can work in broader consort with the community. By coming up with probably better alternatives, but we don't know what they are right now because we're kind of hoping other people might help us.
What is your perceived time limit on your temporary site?
Well, my thought is to get us through the winter months, to find out what the legislature and other entities are gonna do. In the meantime. You know, we, the city doesn't own any other property where we could locate them. So we would need to find a parcel of land that is less egregious and meets the litmus test of being accessible to community services, which is part. And meets the litmus test of being accessible to community services, which is part of the law, and buy it. And so that's what we're gonna be working to do and hopefully by the summer months, we've got. Either this thing so perfected you and we are all happy, or we've got an alternative location.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jerry, I'd like to thank you for. Explaining to us the. I don't want to say shackles, but what we're allowed to do within the law of Oregon. And other states. And I can say, Michael, the Supreme Court. But I'd like to thank you for giving us the education of where it's all coming from.
Hundred percent agenda. October eleventh, twenty twenty minutes, twenty twenty one minutes. And October twenty second, twenty twenty one minutes, emergency meeting, no motion.
I'll make a motion, Bruce, it's in the deal.
Counselor Boggs. Counselor Dagel. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Under the public hearing, for Law Property Management LLC, plan amendment and zone change.
Mayor, City Council, what you saw in your packet was the first evidentiary public hearing that was held. Before the Planning Commission on September twenty first, twenty twenty one. In this, the Planning Commission declared parties to receive written oral testimony to this action. The public hearing was followed by unanimous vote of the commission to recommend that council approve the request of plan amendment zone change. The plan amendment is going from community commercial and low density to a high density. With the concurrent zone change from community commercial, low density residential to a multifamily residential. The findings and facts are attached to this. The notice of public hearing was provided to council these twenty days prior to this. And on the subject property, three point seven five acres located on the west side of Dakota Street. And this is described as Township twenty five, range by section nineteen B, tax lot three hundred and twenty three. So I'd like to stipulate this to the record unless you have any questions or any clarification.
Any public comments? This then will close the public hearing. And on to council business ordinance.
Only a correction, I believe, on page twenty seven.
I was gonna put it up that if you find that error, you get, you went a little with the city manager, but. Well, you could have that one. I found it before, but I didn't want to mention.
So if you're gonna get that, talk about it again in a minute.
There was a study. By the Department of Correctional Care for Graphic Life at Dakota. And I read one twenty eight, oh, one thirty. Is that still in the works? Is it on hold for a number of years?
So the city did hire Samuel Dow Associates and they did that study. And this still met the needs of not having a signal yet.
It's not warranted at this time.
Yeah, the queuing obviously will be backed up more, but it didn't warrant a signal at this time with this development.
But the SDCs collected on this, we'll go towards when, when that time comes.
Council Business Ordinance Number ten eighty six, TreeCityUSA, second reading and adoption.
Sorry, I'm responding to somebody that has a question. We have a person that is thinking that. The homeless camps getting moved to Dakota Street. So I was explaining to him that this is a totally separate issue.
Okay. Ordinance number ten sixty eight, TreeCityUSA. An ordinance of the City of Sutherland adopting a tree USA true tree care program for the City of Sutherland, Oregon. To promote and protect public health, safety and general welfare, welfare. By providing for the regulation of the planting, maintenance and removal of trees, shrubs and other plants. On public property within the town of Sutherland.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we've been studying this now for almost four months. I believe the staff report stands as is and would be prepared to answer any question you might have. And at the end of the day, Counselor Whitaker is the brainchild of this and we thank him for the work he put into this.
I have a motion. Motion is second, any discussion?
A law to enforce it. The reality is there isn't any way we're gonna enforce it to other than if somebody vandalizes a tree. Because we're not gonna find one of our city employees five hundred dollars for cutting down a tree. And obviously, they're under supervision, so they can do fine anyhow. So who are, who are we really enforcing this with other than? I guess just a goodwill. And I understand the benefit. But, but in some ways you think like, so we get to put up a sign and we get to be on the website. Resolution, that's what I'm trying to say.
Beauty is one thing. Trees maybe you're looking at or something like that. You know, when you drive around Eugene, almost every street they have up there that's lined with trees is a traffic hazard. Because all those trees, everything up, fall in the street, you know, and they're slicker. It's gonna be an issue if we go to that street. So I don't know what you're looking at, whether it's just evergreens or, you know. In my neighborhood alone, I have to bear the brunt of my neighbors having all these big leaving trees. I don't have a one, but I clean up my yard. Wow, it just doesn't have anything to do with. Neighbors' trees, this has to do with cities. Cities, well, I know, but we're on city streets, you could decide to plant trees along some city streets because it's a city. So I'm just saying, it's, you know, I'm not really big on myself. The only thing I would say is that we presented all the information. And. People have had a long time to look at it and I appreciate your comments. And, you know, it's up to the council as to whether they want to.
Madam Mayor, just for you, Counselor Dagel, you know, the three elements of management here. That we shouldn't lose sight of. The first is our current development code that has standards for tree planting and, and parking strips and then that. And that's one piece and mostly I can think falls into the category of your area. The other two are what we call PDs or planned unit developments or CCNRs within a certain neighborhood. Who they have imposed, self-imposed. You can look at this as the city CCNRs. And really applies to the tree management and care within the city's right of way. And on city owned property. And that's what this does, it just kind of heightens that and says we are committed. That for trees within our right of way, we will follow this area of instruction. And by the way, if we have any questions, you provide expertise to help us make it better. And so it's not really that there's really any great penalties or, or great fines. It just kind of dictates for the city. And one of the reasons they wanted to make it a law so that it was a law. That if we're gonna cut down trees over here in Central Park, and we have a couple of trees that are a little sketchy right now. As Brian and Aaron fight it out over which route we're gonna go, and I have to referee between the two of them. This code kind of gives us some guidance on how to proceed on things like that. As far as staff goes, we can live with it and we can live without it. But I think the council kind of approved it in their first reading and this is the second reading and adoption.
I mean, what you were saying about.
Yes, that's true, yes. We're gonna do what we want to do regardless.
This gives us a direction to work towards.
Counselor Boggs. Counselor Dagel. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Now that is democracy in action. Yeah. And nobody canceled anybody and nobody hates anybody.
Okay, ordinance. An ordinance amending the City of Sutherland's comprehensive plan map and zoning map. To amend the comprehensive plan map from community commercial and low density to high density. Concurrent with the zoning map change from community commercial C three. And low density residential R one to multifamily residential R three for property described as tax lot three twenty three. In section nineteen B of Township twenty five south, range zero five west. The subject three point seven five acre property is located at zero Dakota Street and described here in.
Mayor, City Council, again, we're just requesting the approval that Planning Commission and staff recommends that you approve the application.
What we know is gonna go in there, where's the water source? Is that from the main line of the? Central Dakota Street or is it coming from the, the water line on the coast street? Is that the same water line that feeds up property, off Port Lake, Avery building out there? It comes out the same vein, which is an eighteen inch, but. Well, I don't know if it's because of the weather this year or whatnot, but my water pressure as far out as I live, which is. Has seemed to have dropped considerably. I don't know what it'll do with this rain stuff. So just wondering if you're gonna run off of that, you know what's gonna go in there, you know? Oh, that's gonna affect water pressure further out. And we can look into your dropping pressure, but reservoirs have been full, so it should be. A similar pressure to what you've had in the past, I'm not sure what. I was thinking just maybe because of our drought situation.
And I'm sure it's got to tell, I don't know if it's a conservative traffic there. Like, you have weird apartments that means potentially they're gonna have two hundred cars, you're gonna work at eight o'clock in the morning. Really, after they get out there, they're gonna walk on, on their gate, there's a light in there, so that's gonna create a little bit more.
There's a lot more people at Starbucks.
Well, if I might, I, I don't want to go on too long, but that's a very good point. But, but by the time this project's done and that population matrix is in, we're talking three to five years from now. And I would assume in the process of other developments we're doing. At some point, something's going to trigger the need for a, a traffic signal of some sort. Long before these apartments are completed.
It seems kind of problematic that there's only one street to get into. It should be nice if there's another way to.
Counselor Boggs. Counselor Dagel. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Ordinance number ten eighty eight, Pacific Core franchise agreement with emergency clause, city reporter.
Ordinance number ten eighty eight, an ordinance of the City of Sutherland granting an electric utility franchise and general utility easement. To Pacific Core and declaring an emergency.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are some pet peeves we as city managers have that we try to insert into these things. But for the most part, it is a battle between attorneys. And the two attorneys came together and we finally have our attorney's approval and recommendation to adopt this ordinance. You will notice within the framework of my staff report, I'm asking you to adopt it under emergency clause. And that is, as we even talked about earlier. They have kind of resisted allowing us to put any cameras underneath their system. Without having the franchise agreement acknowledge that. And that is included in section nine point six and everybody's satisfied. So we'd like to get moving and getting these cameras in as soon as possible. It gives us coverage all the way up to Fort Ponchi. It gives us coverage all the way up to Fort Ponchi. So it gives you from nearly from Bymaral, we have Fort Pon, we have Central and Highway 138 now Cameron, where almost nothing can happen without us at least being able to identify who a culprit might be in terms of carrying out illicit activity. And so the sooner the better.
Stop motion.
I move that we adopt ordinance from 1088. Hang on.
Second, same discussion.
Are we having to tap into their power for the cameras? Of the pole? So. More convenient. That and try to.
Well, yeah.
Because we got the wind power.
Yeah, the old, the old agreement, if you look around town, had plug-ins on, on most of the poles. So that's what we wanted to use there. It's already there. The. We'll sort of ready to go essentially. So.
This is a hospice situation.
Okay, all of you, three and a half percent. Really, we're the ones that's gonna pay the three and a half percent.
No, they pay it to us. Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, we'll just pass, understand that the user's gonna end up paying for that.
Yes, yes, yeah, but, you know, we could go up to five. This is the three and a half percent that's been there for probably 50 years. And we chose not to raise anybody's franchise fees over that.
Okay, Counselor Boggs. Counselor Diggle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
With the license approval, El Horst Cafe, staff report, police.
Mayor, Council Troy Mills, Chief of Police. The L L C has made an application of requirements of the control commission for full on premise license for the sale of alcohol members of nine 967. Request is result of El Horst Cafe, any retail business with. The individual applying for license sector, Ruben Arrio Larios. The police department has found no information that would be used as disqualifying by the Oregon Liquor Control Commission. I'm sorry to approve the recommendation or to not approve the LLC's recommendation.
That will motion. Or a motion to provide to the OLCC a recommendation that the license be approved and granted. Second. Take session.
Okay, you're right. Sorry. Everyone knows in the application that he doesn't have a social security number. Right. It's a state. I have a social security.
We probably didn't want to put it on here.
We said the maniacs in the house. And it looked checked out, and he didn't have to put it down. Yes, I have one.
Yeah, we don't monitor that element of the law.
I understand it's not our, our issue, but which is.
Kind of dishes into El Horst Cafe.
Thanks so much, Council. We'll practice. We're at the breakfast.
What is that?
Well, it's a down the white horse.
Oh, white horse, yeah, okay.
All right, let's vote.
Counselor Boggs.
Aye.
Counselor Diggle.
Aye.
Counselor Whitaker.
Aye.
Counselor Smalley.
Aye.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Mayor Sumner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a catch study for the street and the park.
It actually says industrial park and dovetail.
Ooh.
So this is just in follow-up to the staff report that was provided, oh, Christine over redevelopment. That was to the staff report provided in July that was for the, that did include the Dakota Street. We, to keep the economic growth going, bringing in those businesses, of course, we're kind of restrained from the traffic studies, so by requiring them, people just kind of walk away. So we've been trying to be proactive and move forward with getting through some of these. So Kelly Sandow with Sandow Engineering is who we've been working with. She completed the Dakota Street, and as you previously heard, the need for traffic light is not yet needed. However. It's been recommended to move forward and put those system development charges in. If there's other budget funding available to put aside to put a light in Dakota Street. The other two studies are for the industrial park, the airport property, and that is the one we're working on the wetlands with. So now to keep the traffic flowing and as other businesses want to come in, as more property becomes available with those wetland credits, we will have that information already in hand, as well as dovetail. Dovetail is a one-way in, one-way out going north, which can be problematic. So doing that study as well for additional development to go in that area and what it will trigger. The right turn lane was triggered years ago with the development, and there's future phases. We're working with ODOT on generating a new step-by-step kind of a layout, because it was all done back when, if a lot of you from here remember, the electric car station manufacturing facility that was going to go in, that's when all the phase development improvements were from. So we'll get kind of some of those laid out, but at this point, we'll do the traffic study and identify what will be required. Those two reports are anticipated to be complete near the end of February 2022, so.
City manager, do you have anything more you want to talk about?
No, ma'am. Except we are gonna go into executive session under 1926602H to consult with our legal counsel.
Aye.
Tonight.
City council comments. Remember, monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis, should be handled outside meeting. How about?
Very kind of a fix-it date on those manholes on the west side. They seem to be getting worse. The surrounds, you know, concrete part around.
Yeah.
We don't have an exact date yet, but we're closing in on it. We've switched directions. We've switched directions a few times. We were hoping to do a bigger scale fix, and now we're going back to that smaller fix. And we've got the money identified, and we're gonna try to get those done ASAP. Okay, and the speed sign on Fort McKay, where you come off of Central there, seems to have later been knocked down or disappeared. Haven't seen for the last. It's once you get on Fort McKay. Yeah, it's the first one that sits right there, just up, you go on Fort McKay. It seems it's either knocked down or removed. I noticed people out there really don't pay attention to the speed. And as you go west, you know, passenger road, there's nothing that says in speeds or anything, so. That. And I think that's it. Thank you.
That's for Diggle.
The only thing I have. I think kind of what's on there is say that.
It's for the recorder.
I've been working on something like a business listings for Sutherland, like yellow pages. I'm gonna do something with that. I thought maybe at some point I want to bring it to. Actually, we're all in such a case, but I can think.
That's for Whitaker. That's for Smalley.
I know our chief is under a lot of pressure with the homeless right now, and I think in comparison to a lot of other towns, our size around, I think we're doing a pretty good job. You know, that's all you guys say. Trying, that's a bottom of the trying.
That's for Grossman.
I would like to just request when the. There's lady that's supposed to be put away for street light signals along 138. And I don't know what the prices are, but it would be really advantageous to have them all seen. And I don't know if that costs more, but this would just make it a way we should probably try and consider having them all seen. I guess you do go through that.
The original script. It's in my recycle bin.
That's for him.
Kristi, I assume, and public works, thank you for updating our census signs. I, I, the two ways that I see them, I haven't been that way for a while, so I did notice a while back, and so I wanted to.
Just in time for him to change, I'm sure.
Yeah. Early nineties. And that's all.
I just said one day, I went downtown during our Halloween event with all the businesses. And outstanding, I swear, we had probably 700 kids. And a lot of businesses participated. I want to thank all the businesses for doing that. I thought it was a huge success. And I thought it was such a success that Halloween night, there were hardly any kids out. Which is probably good, a lot saved.
Anywhere you live.
You had a lot of addicts there. Down like State Street.
Downtown was at my house.
Well, none were hardly anywhere down on State Street, so. So, so I thought that was a great thing for our city. A shout out. And that's all I have. So public comment, the purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. Do we have any citizens on Zoom that would like to speak?
Don't see any.
All right.
Yeah, so let's take a five-minute break.
She has to read. I need you, before we go into, before we adjourn to go into the session, I have to have you read something. We have to. It's recorded. It is, it is.
Know that, but you don't have to do it before you adjourn. You just have to do it before you convene.
Just to do it both. Before you adjourn and then going back in.
Gang up on me, will you?
Say.
Am I able to speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I just had like some questions regarding, you know, the parcels of land where they're gonna be staying. It's really close to the schools and like residential areas. And my concern is, is a lot of these people have stolen property from my nieces. Also have caused harm to people's vehicles at the park, have left drug needles at the park, drug paraphernalia where the kiddos found it. And I just don't think it's a good idea with it being in that spot. And, you know, like, I understand wanting to help, but I feel like enabling isn't really helping. And I just think our community and our taxpayers and our children should always come first. I mean, I care about people, and I think that if they need help and if they want it, that's one thing. There's resources out there for mental health and drug addiction, but if they don't want it, they should not get enabled. And there should be rules and boundaries in order to stay there.
And those will be put in place, but one thing to, and I appreciate your comments. Everybody's comments. Thing is, if we don't have one spot where we tell them they can be. They've been up by Forest Heights around those people's houses up there. They've been up off of dovetail up behind the golf course that you know, all over there. At least we've got them in one place and we can keep track of them a little bit better.
Well, I understand that completely. I just was trying to think if there's like another spot that's more suitable for the situation, considering all the traffic and children and the residents, you know, and it's just not very safe. Like, it just doesn't feel safe. Like, I've actually had one of the people act like they were shooting me and my kids whenever we were driving, and I turned it in and stuff, and it's just, they act all crazy, and I know I'm not the only person that's happened to. And it just worries me for our community and our kids, really. I know I don't want my kid getting jabbed at the needle at the park playing, that's for sure.
Definitely, and if you do have any issues that are criminal related, then please call them into the police department.
Yeah, I have. I've reported like pretty much every incident. So that's just my concern, you know, the kiddos and the community and keeping everybody safe. And I mean, like, there's that thing in Roseburg. I know we're not as big as Roseburg, but I know like the Elk Island, they were like gonna make it where people had to kind of work, you know, to earn their stay. And I know the mission as well does that, or at least used to. So I was just thinking, like, you know, if they maybe got a work board or something, it might boost them up a little bit, maybe encourage them to do better in life, hopefully, and it's neither that or, you know, you don't have a place to stay kind of thing.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? All right, thank you. We need to go. Oh, wait, hold on one second. All right, we're not sure. We have to reload thing. So this has to be. After adjournment, council will take a five-minute recess and go into executive session 192.6602H to consult with attorney regarding legal rights and duties in regards to current litigation or litigation that is more likely than not to be filed.